Okay, I finally figured it out. Go ahead.
Okay. What about no action taken? Tammy or Rob?
Okay. Kimmy Robinson, Finance Director. And I have the weekly update. Just a couple of items on my list. The first one is for the consolidation in the HR and Finance Offices. Based on our discussion for computer equipment furniture needs, it looks like we will need to purchase an additional desk. And so, I would like to request CIP funds for that up to 6,000 because that will have to include shipping. I have done some looking and I've been able to find some stuff that will be on the government contract, so we'll get the best rate that we possibly can. But I did want to give you a heads up because we probably, I mean, I have no idea as far as timeline. It says it should be here within three to five business days. And it's already assembled, so they literally dropped the boxes off and then our building maintenance people will have to bring it in. But I wanted to get your approval for that so that we could go ahead and move on that and not be without a desk.
Okay. I make a question that we approve that, judges.
CIP funds?
Six thousand.
My third, six thousand.
Yep.
Second. All the third?
Aye. Okay. The next thing I wanted to update you on are the IRB. Well, it is the IRB that we talked about last week when we got that letter. And I had sent a couple of questions to the city after I had spoke with Mr. Cowan. And I did receive some information from Mr. Seitz yesterday afternoon, so I wanted to share that with you. The first question I asked was, since the notice does not mention a pilot, can we assume the intent is to have a fully abated tax? And he did say there is no pilot with the current bond issue. So, the only one that has that payment in lieu of tax is that 2018 IRB that was issued. So, that means that we would get nothing if we, I mean, whether we approve it or not, the city can act without your blessing. The only thing you would have the ability to do would be to show up at the hearing and let them know whether you feel like it's a good idea or not. So, your hands are basically tied if they're going to do this. It's just a matter of you putting on record whether you want this done or agree with it.
And does that include the school district or not?
Yep, the school would have the same opportunity to do it, but it's under the city. So, the city's commission has the purview to determine whether they go forward with it or not after the hearing. Kind of like the revenue neutral rate, you know, people can come here and they can tell you if they're unhappy with the decision you're making, but you still have the ultimate authority to go forward or not. So, the next question I asked is, this does not appear to have an end date on the 60 million. Does that, it mean that it lasts in perpetuity? And Mr. Seitz says, per statute, the IRBs will last no longer than 10 years. This is merely notice and will be followed by an ordinance later on. And the reason this came up is because when I was talking to Mr. Cowan, the first one didn't have an end date either. And it was a $40 million bond in total, and they had two issuances, one in 2018 and one in 2022. So, the first issuance in 2018 was 5,618,386. And of that, we're receiving a pilot of 205,413,86, and that goes through 2028. And this information I got from Mr. Cowan. So, then the second one was issued in 2022, and it was issued for 2,25,091.83. And it ends in 2031, but that one has been 100% abated, so we have not got anything on that. And once it ends in 2031, then in 2032, we'll be able to start collecting tax on that one. The first one ends in 2028, so we'd be able to collect taxes on that in 2029. So, Mr. Cowan said, you know, you may check and see, do they intend to issue anything more on that 40 million? So, based on what Mr. Seitz says, technically, they would have till 2028 to go ahead and issue on that 40 million. He didn't actually address that 100%, that they have no intention to issue anything additional on that 40 million, other than to say that it has the 10 years. So, I'm assuming that if they wanted to, they could. As well as this new $60 million one that will be a 10-year potentially.
But, because this is very confusing to me, but didn't Travis say that they are making payments in lieu of taxes?
That's what that pilot is on the 2018 issue. That's the only one.
That's 200 and so on though.
Yeah, that's the one that...
But is that like, the payment, is that something that's split between the city and the county and the school district, or who gets that money?
Let me see if I don't have that sheet here in front of me.
And that was only on the first one? The second one, we won't get that, that 60 million?
The 60 million has no pilot included in it.
And it includes that one in 22.
I'm not necessarily against that because I feel that, you know, Michelin is a well-established company. They're wanting to bring 500 or 300 more jobs here in the next five years. I think that is, and their quality, you know, they have good benefits, good pay. I think that, I just want to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing as far as taxes and payments.
Well, I think, I think coupled with that, they hit their benchmarks if they were important here.
Oh, yeah. I think they've been very good to our community. I'm not, and, you know, I mean, if they weren't here, we wouldn't be getting the taxes anyway. But I don't have a problem giving people, you know, breaks that are actually doing things in our community. They're very involved in our community. In fact, they have somebody sitting on our coalition because they are worried about giving these 300 more jobs and not having anybody watch those kids, so.
Yeah, I just want you to understand what the actual numbers are and how it affects because it does, it is going to affect our ad valorem taxes because what they're not paying, the other people will be in order to pay our taxes. And so, it's giving a big business break and all the littler people are paying the difference. And that's really the thing with these kinds of actions, which is completely fine, but I just want you completely aware of what we're doing. So, there's no surprises if anybody comes and asks you those kinds of questions. And so, you know, if they're issuing this on a certain piece of property, it is only that piece of property that's affected. It's not maybe everything that they have. So, I don't know how many parcels they actually have to be affected, but it's these issuances, which are supposed to be for renovations and growth type, that are not taxable. So, it works a little bit like the NRP-type programs, but not quite. And so, there's a lot of pages to these documents. We looked at these the other day. I was on the phone with Mr. Cowan. But these were things that he said, you know, that you just want to be aware of and you know, and that you ask the city these questions, you get these answers, and then you're educated on what's really happening versus, well, you know, it's just a city thing and we can't answer any questions. So, that's the main thing that I want you to know. But you guys definitely have the ability to go to that hearing tomorrow, voice anything that you feel is necessary, and also be aware that technically, that they can completely ignore anything that you say and go ahead and go forward with it.
Makes very well.
The only other thing I asked was if we were, like I said, if we had this 40 million, if it was also whatever was left, which is about 33 million, plus the 60 million is what we were looking at. And that's where I didn't quite get a complete answer. He just says they're two separate investments. So, in saying that, I'm assuming that the first one has a maximum of 40 million with 10 years, which means it won't expire until 2028. So, they could potentially issue more bonds off of that 40 million through 2028. And then when this 60 million one occurs, they'll have 10 years after that as well. And I also asked if this 60 million was going to be one big issuance or if there were going to be several little ones. And he says they assume there would just be one issuance on this IRB, but assuming doesn't definitively say yes or no. Yeah, so. So, that's the information that I got on that. Wanted to make sure you were aware of those factors. The next thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, I've been discussing with Jamie a couple of processes within the accounts payable, and one of them that we're looking at is purchase cards. So, right now, the purchase card voucher system is very cumbersome because the way we are sending our vouchers in, if we want to go and look at our financials, you can't see which vendor it is that the expense is for. So, when we put it in, our vendor is Central National Bank. And a lot of times, we're putting these in as lump sums. So, like, maybe we have $3,000 in mils. You can see that it's mils, but you don't know where it got paid or which cardholder actually spent it. And so, with that, I would like your permission to go out on an RFP and see if we have any options on purchase card services where we could actually get into a program that would allow us to capture that vendor, who the cardholder is, the expense. And then, I would also like to see if there's any companies out there that would provide a rebate back to us, which means that if we're spending specific dollars on purchase card, then we get a percentage of those dollars back in fees for having used the purchase card system. So, it could be that Central National Bank is as competitive as anybody else and that they are the best service. But what this would tell us is that if we go out for RFP, that we either definitively know they're the best one for the service, or we go out and get the best service. And this is really the transparent piece for government because right now, we can't be very transparent in our financials with this. When I'm trying to do analytical, and, you know, we're paying some of our utilities with the purchase card. If I want to capture utilities, I can't on any of those that are being paid in Central National Bank.
Yeah, it is very confusing because I remember going through and I'm like, I just don't understand any stuff. And, yeah, I think this would make it more efficient and transparent to have it done that way.
Well, so, when we pay Central National for that, you may have 200 pages of documents because that's how many purchase cards transactions that we have, and it's all in one transaction. So, the other thing is, is right now, everything that we're entering is manual. And so, you know, we are trying to change our processes a little to try to add the vendor name in there, but then what that does is, she may have 150 entries for one department, like the sheriff's department, that's how many it may be that she has to do in one AP cycle, which is a lot and is very cumbersome. I do know there's programs out there that would allow us to put it in their system and then pull that information and upload it directly into our financials so we do not have to manually enter that, which would save tremendous time. And so, those are the things that I would like to see, that maybe Central National has that ability and we haven't been tapping into it. But if not, maybe there's somebody out there that would have that ability so that we could see if we could make our processes more effective and efficient.
Well, I'm, yeah, go ahead. More to be heard.
I agree with that. Okay. So, I would also like your permission to work, well, I can work with Jamie, but I would also like to bring Teresa in on that team as we're doing this because she's been working with Central National on the purchase cards probably since the beginning of time. So, she would be a good asset to...
Since it happened?
Well, I mean, since we began using purchase cards. Sorry, I didn't word that very well. Go ahead. So, I think she would be a really good asset to use from the county perspective on that. And there is one purchase, and this is part of the purchase card program. Not only would I want to go out and see the best services we could provide, but I would also like to update our purchase card manual so that we have stronger processes. One thing I want to point out to you that we noticed in doing this run of vouchers is, we had an invoice where we paid for a meal, and that meal was $80.
For one person?
I believe there was two people on the ticket, but $80 for two people is still high.
Yeah, there needs to be a cap.
So, we don't have any of that in place right now, and I'm not even sure how closely it's being looked at, but those are things that I would like to make a requirement to look at more closely, limit set so that, you know, if they want to spend $80, then the county will only pay a portion of it and they pay the remaining. So, I think there's some things there that we can do to help save county taxpayer dollars. The other thing I want to note on here, sales tax was paid on it. So, it was on a purchase card and we paid sales tax. So, if it's on a purchase card and it was a county purchase card, they should have been using a tax exemption certificate, and we shouldn't have been paying sales tax. But that's not being done either. So, we're paying sales tax on almost all this stuff.
So, was it in-state or out-of-state?
Well, actually, you make a good point because that was Texas. So, in that case, it would be. But if we're not doing it, and that's something that we're not looking at at all, so we need to do a better job making sure if it's in-state, that we know it's in-state and we're using that exemption card. So, that's something...
It's simple enough.
Right. And if we have it in our, in a procedure, in a manual book, then, you know, and the employees will be responsible for reading this and signing a sheet saying that they have read it and they will abide by it, then, you know, that makes them responsible to pay that back if we're not doing it. Something else, you know, in this purchase card manual, I would like to see is that, you know, we set a limit on tips. So, if you're going to pay a tip, it shouldn't exceed 20%. And anything over that, then you should be responsible to pay that difference as well. So, there's all these things that I think we can put in place and make our purchase card program stronger and more effective and efficient for the county and the taxpayer dollar. So, those are things that I would like you to know that I want to work towards, and part of it is starting with this RFP for the purchase card services. I think that's great.
Very cool.
So, I think that is it for me today. We're working on the budget presentations. We're finalizing the schedule. We'll get that to Teresa for the meeting list, and you guys will have that as well. She's putting paper binders together for you again. And so, we'll start that the Monday after I'm back on June 5th. And we plan on using the big screen monitors and pulling up anything that you guys are looking at, why they're being presented. Mostly, that first day will be all outside entities like it was last year. Just as a reminder, since I won't see you until that day, you know, you will not be making any decisions. This is all just them reviewing the information and providing it to you and you being able to ask any questions that you have. And so, if they ask or they assume, you know, you just want to make sure that they know that there's no decisions that'll be made until we get closer to our due date and finalize everything with all of the information that's come in. We really haven't, so this Friday is the deadline for the outside entities, and we haven't received a lot of those in yet. And so, I'm assuming that this week will be a big week to get those in. And once they're in, I will have Louisa go ahead and send you out the documents for anybody that's presenting on that Monday so that you can start reviewing them, mark your questions that you might have for them when they come in. The ones we have received have been asking for increases. So, you might want to be thinking about that, you know, where you think you might want to land. And I think that's all I can think of for, since I won't be here until that 5th, but if there's anything this week that you think of, let me know. I'll be back on the 2nd, but I won't be back to a meeting until the 5th. Okay. So, all right.
Thank you.
I did mention that ambulance thing, the bill, so we'll be doing some work on that and I'll work with Betsy and we'll keep you guys posted.
Okay.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
It's not that much of an increase, $191 a year.
Do you want to go into Cory, or Cory Troy's room today, or Adam, you want to do that?
Yeah, if you want to do that. You want to do that or from that? Who's me? Much needed.
She'll be here. I thought she said around 10:30, but she's not here yet.
Is that a surprise?
She, she's. Interstate.
Oh, no.
In Washington.
Oh, no.
What she said one minutes ago? Maybe. Okay, it's 11:00. All righty. Yeah, we'll start it off with the 4H beef barn metal roofing replacement sealed bids. We sent this out to quite a few contractors.
Ten of them.
Ten of them and only received two back. So first one I'll open will be Danker Roofing. And he does have a bid bond attached. And they've got a grand total of $205,436. Two oh five, four three six point zero zero. Estimated start July 10th, estimated completion August 30th. And they've got a two-year labor warranty and a 20-year material warranty.
Okay, not real attention to things, but in the fair in July.
We're, we're gonna have to work around that. It's noted in here not to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next one is from Yutsi Roofing. Why'd you do that?
Where's Partridge?
Yeah, Partridge. I can move back around. Can resist.
Partridge?
That's Southwest, isn't it? Okay. They have a check for 5% of the amount bid. Covering the bid bond. And he has a grand total of $96,800. Nine six eight zero zero. Estimated start September, estimated completion October, five years on labor warranty and 40-year paint warranty on materials. I was estimating around a hundred thousand is what I was figuring on it was gonna cost. I will take these back, double check their math and make a recommendation at my next scheduled meeting.
Have you ever worked with?
Yes, they did.
Both of them?
Uh, yeah, both Danker and Yutsi. Danker. And Yutsi was the one that did sealed our roofs down there with that concrete product. That would have been BA Commercial Roofing. Out of St. Mary's. Okay, then I guess I'll head off. The next sealed bid opening is supposed to be at 11:15. And we did not receive any for the health department steps and handrail replacement. So we're probably gonna have to go back out on contacts and contractors to see why they didn't get the job. And I'm just assuming that they're just overwhelmed and their, their plate's full and they didn't want to bid it, so.
Yeah, that's a little job.
It is. Yeah, but when I look at little jobs like that, they're perfect little fill-in jobs in between bigger jobs. So keep your guys busy, it keeps them paid, so. But I will make a recommendation on later date on that, those. Uh, next thing I got is a temporary construction easement that County Commission approved. Back of the cost back on April 3rd. I just needed a signature from Commissioner Asher. This is for Thomas Bond through that bridge project down on West Line Creek Road.
Yeah, Betsy, that's it, yeah.
And let's see here, okay. Talking about the C495301 Conroe Bridge Project change orders. I questioned K-Dot or Katie Lilly out here at the local office, you know, when, when are we gonna expect to see an invoice for paying for some of these change orders? Like I said, this off-system bridge project is my first rodeo with, with this, uh, this type of grant. So according to him, this is a parent-child projects and they're basically a large pool of, pool of federal funding that is spread out to numerous LPAs, cities, counties. And then until all those are completed, uh, that's when the invoices for the change orders are gonna come out. And according to him, he, they said it could be 2026 or 2027 before we see invoices. And I would rather, he, he said the only way we could go ahead and get these change orders paid for is to basically ask K-Dot for another commitment of funds. So I, I would think that would be the smartest thing to do is for me to email Todd back and say, yeah, we want to do a commitment of funds so we can get this stuff paid for instead of invoices coming across their deck, you know, in 2027. That's just weird, but I'd just rather get, get them paid for now. I just want to get a consensus, consensus of the commission to do that, so. That way we can get, get these taken care of, so. Anyway, talking about the Conroe Bridge project, just give you a little update. Schilling, uh, this was, Schilling was scheduled to be on site today and poss, it's gonna take them two days. But they ain't, uh, they're not laying asphalt in this weather, but, uh, to place asphalt. So I'd imagine when the weather cooperates with them, they'll be there. Juneman should be, they're doing the dirt work, uh, should complete the shoulder operations. Guard grill and pads at the end of this week. The deck grouping is scheduled for Thursday of this week. And then next week, J and J guard grill and seating. And basically gonna do a walkthrough punch list and they're planning on opening the road. So just to bring everybody up to speed on that. Any questions? Cloud County Community College went out and had a meeting with Jennifer and she was meeting with their insurance guy popped in, in out there. And their insurance company is gonna be supplying them around 24 pucks as to use them in various, various places in all the buildings. These pucks, they monitor, uh, you can set the temperatures however you want to and it sends an alarm. Basically cold weather temps, hot weather temps and moisture. And their insurance company is paying for the pucks and they're paying for the cell service for, for this. And I believe the burst pipe in building B back in December, that's probably why, you know. If, if we'd have known it was that cold up there, we'd have done a little bit of investigating.
Sure.
Uh, but that's what these pucks are for. And there's gonna be a few of them above the ceiling tiles, uh, cause that's how these are. You got ceiling tiles, you got a void, then you got insulation. And, uh, you know, with that insulation falls down, you don't know it. So, um, I think it's a very, very smart idea to do that. So I just wanted to make the commission aware that they're gonna be supplying these pucks for college, so.
Yeah, that's good.
And basically if it triggers an alarm, whether it's moisture or temperature, it, it could be sent however we want it to, whether by text, a phone call, an email right away, so.
So it'll come to, to you or Frank or somebody?
Yeah, yeah, but we could select however many numbers. It'll send out a mass text or email or a phone call, so. But I thought it was a pretty, pretty ingenious idea, really. This one made me roll my eyes with the south doors here on this building. Uh, finally received notification from Hartford Insurance to proceed with interstate glasses quote. So it is, materials have been ordered and they're probably about 12 weeks out. And that's just to get the materials in. So then after that, they gotta schedule it, so. At least the ball's rolling slowly.
How many weeks is it done?
February. I was real close to, to getting your consensus on just turning over to K Camp and say, let them fight it. We might be at a thousand, you know, or a hundred, but I just got tired of waiting on that guy from Hartford to contact me back, so. And it took, he asked us to get three quotes. Well, one vendor made the comment in an email that said that, uh, uh, they can't compete with Mako's prices. They'll be higher than Mako's, that's interstate. So he didn't even want to put a quote in and this other company, they sent a quote. You know, by the time you schedule this for these guys to come in, look at it, and then it takes them a week or two to actually get you the number. It just drags out, you know, drags it on out, but they were a thousand dollars higher. So, and according to Hartford, we were, interstate was, uh, double what it should be for our area. So I guess he's, yeah, but anyway, interstate's got the stuff ordered and they'll schedule it when the material comes in. Uh, just to update you on, uh, the 4H girl softball field rodeo saddle club, all that external water out there. Uh, C and K completed supplying all of the farm hydrants and concession stand with water. When they initially turned the water on, there was a leak underground somewhere and they expedited. I just said, go ahead and dig up next to those farm hydrants. And, uh, they found one hydrant that had a broken nipple, which they repaired on May 3rd. And there will be an added charge of $952, $952 for the repairs, which include labor. The original quote was for $4,872, which is gonna be taken out of the facility fund. So I need approval to pay the additional work that was completed, which is $952 out of the facility.
We need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any motion that we, uh, pay the additional price?
Second.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm getting there. Uh, next thing I got would be the Gary County Detention Center Plumbing Repairs. C and K Construction performed various emergency, uh, plumbing repairs in the detention center between the 8th and the 28th of April. The total invoice is $7,708.95. I'd recommend approval and it'd be taken out of the facility fund.
So moved. So the money that the juvenile detention center gets from other counties, none of that goes towards the maintenance of the building? Or do they pay us for leasing the building?
This, this is for the jail. You said juvenile detention.
Oh, I thought that, I thought you said, I, when you said detention center, I was, I'm up with that juvenile detention center, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind then. Next that.
Well, I think the appropriate term is detention center instead of jail, but, uh, I call them both, but. Do you want that back?
Yeah. Hi, Dancy, how was the circus? It was one of the best concerts ever seen. What'd you say, maybe that's less?
Got some pictures for you to look at.
Thank you.
We have a proposal, an opportunity to purchase, uh, a Dodge Ram 4500. And in the CIP, we budgeted for $190,000 to spend on basically like a one ton or a ton and a half truck. Master Tech has this, uh, this Dodge Ram 4500. It's got really, really, really low miles on it. It was their demo model. It's got a little over a thousand miles on it, somewhere on there it says it. But it would also include, um, a basically a snow plow with the LED light package and a salt dog spreader. Material spreading for winter. Yeah, it's got 1,065 miles on it, so it's pretty much brand new. It's a 2022, so we're considering a used demonstrator. Um, and the cost to just track was $121,439. And then the cost of this new snow plow and the complete package has handheld controllers, uh, snow deflectors and all the undercarriage mounting for $15,898. And then the salt ball, the salt dog spreader, which it's all electric, it's not, um, the spreaders that we currently have have a little, uh, bridge and strap and motor on the back of it to run the conveyor and spinner and stuff. And it's, they're horrible. They're, they're constantly dying, flooding out, hard starting, so on and so forth. But that's why we decided to go with them all electric. Jeremy done some research on them. There's, uh, several cities, especially up in Nebraska, that use these all-electric ones and they've had good luck with them. Uh, if electric motor goes out, you can, you know, exchange it real quick and get going, so. Um, but the cost of the spreader is $15,876. And then they got a freight handling charge of $1,575. And then we get the municipal use discount, uh, nine, $9,282 and another discount for the, for the 98, uh, 9282. That was for, uh, the truck package. And then there's also discount for the snow and ice equipment of $1,143. So the grand total of everything combined would be $144,863. And I'd request to the commission to, uh, I'd recommend approval of this, purchasing this equipment through Master Tech Truck Equipment.
Second.
CIP?
Yeah.
Yeah, we budgeted $190,000 for this, yeah.
On paper? How soon can you do it?
Oh, I think turnaround will be pretty quick. The truck's already ready and I believe they have the equipment on the ground. Uh, that salt dog and that, so it should be pretty quick turnaround on that.
Was that radios?
Yeah, we've got some extra radios actually at the shop from equipment that we've sold. So just scheduling to get them to come and install it. They'd be usually pretty quick about that as well.
Who does that pretty well?
K Camp?
Yeah.
Uh, another dilemma, the old annex building sewer line issues. I submitted a claim to K Camp and they will only pay for the exposure of the service line. And the only thing that, that won't be covered is actual repair to the line. And, uh, we got two quotes from, one was from C and, C and K. And it was basically they'll expose the breakout and remove concrete in the area of where the non-working sewer line is so they can run a sewer camera down the sewer line, use to locate and find sewer blockage. They will replace the concrete, submit a price to repair the blocked sewer line. So their cost here is just to expose it and find a problem and they're gonna have an additional cost on top of that to repair it. This one here was for 28, $2,864. Sunset Plumbing, we're already into them for 1850, I believe, $1,850 bucks for the work they've done thus far on it. Um, but their quote to take care of this issue is break up the concrete, replumb the toilet grain in both bathrooms, provide a proper wall cleanout, pour concrete back. So basically their, this quote here is replacing all of the sewer line where they both line and tee together from the toilets on down where it ties in. So, and their quote was for $3,000. Again, turn this claim into K Camp and everybody feels that the Sunset Plumbing is the best one to go with. So we've got, we've got back and got back with them and we've scheduled them to, to start. And as soon as they can get in there and get going on this is the 25th of this month, so, uh, just to kind of bring you up to speed on that.
So the bathrooms on the driver's license side is still okay then?
Yeah, yeah. Then I'll turn this one over to Jeremy. That's his baby.
Oh, yeah. Talk a little bit about our oil distributor for chip sealing and asphalt patch. And, uh, it's a 1995 Roscoe model and we've been having some issues with it lately, getting it ready. End of last year's chip sealing season, the automatic mode quit working on it, had to put it in manual mode. And they were having some trouble, you know, converting calculations back and forth with that for proper application of the oil on the road. Jacob, shop supervisor, spent a lot of time trying to diagnose and find a repair for this. And finally we sent it up to Kansas City to Kirby Smith to have them look at it. And since being there, I think it's been there for two months now. They've got pretty good labor bill against it, just trying to troubleshoot it and stuff. But due to the age of it, uh, parts are becoming obsolete. And even finding anybody that has knowledge on the working of this older unit's becoming pretty tough. So we're kind of bouncing back and forth. They kind of have narrowed it down to being the pump, but not 100% sure. And that's a thou, a $7,000 pump for it. Um, there's some actuators back there for $2,300 that they'd like to install and try. Again, we don't know if that's the, the fix for it. So I think bouncing it off Cory and, and Jacob in the shop. So I think bouncing it off Corey and Jacob in the shop, putting that kind of money into this older unit is not probably the best idea. So we want to look for a used or new unit out there and see what's available and see if we can talk with Tammy to come up with some funding to replace that unit. Because, I mean, it is a vital piece of what we do down there, so.
Cause without an oil distributor, we can't chip seal, we can't asphalt overlay. I found out late Friday afternoon, cause I reached out to Morris County to say, hey buddy, old pal, we rented our roller to you guys last year. How about a little favor? Well, they don't own an oil distributor. They rent theirs from another outfit out of Kansas City. But yeah, so we're pretty much dead in the water. Jeremy's done some research online and there's not very many oil distributor dealers around the U.S. I looked on that map and I think it was only like twelve. And there's really nothing close to us. He did find a used one in North Carolina. It's a two thousand twelve.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. It had a little bit smaller tank on it. I think it had like an eighteen, eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty. Ours is actually labeled at nineteen hundred now, so fifty gallons less is the only difference in that.
But then it's, it looks like it's in relatively real good shape. So like I said, that's the thing, if, if we, if we have to, I don't want to buy something sight unseen. We'd probably have Jeremy or me go look at the thing, but it'd probably be in, like I said, I, I looked and there's some in, he had three of them, I think, in North Carolina and then South Florida and California. I mean, there's, there's one down in Brownsville, Texas. But the availability of them is not, not very good. So we might have to have one of us go on a field trip and see which way we want to go, so.
Yeah. Then there are some other, like he mentioned in Texas and stuff like that. But it's always kind of our hopes and upgrading. We knew at some point we were going to have to do this, but to go to an automatic transmission in this unit, it currently is manual. And the majority of them that you see on the market currently still have that manual transmission in them. Where this one that I did find it has the Allison automatic, so it would be a pretty good fit if everything checked out all right.
Cause the automatic transmissions are ideal when you're, you, you, you don't have to shift gears when you're, you got back bars on. It's a lot easier for the operator if it's an automatic, especially when you're slowing down, going around like entrances or, or roads, asphalt roads. I mean, you've got those radiuses where you just kind of follow it around. You don't have to worry about downshift and you stalled it and yeah, so.
Start and stopping on hills and all that. We've seen it stall out and then here you go. Just creates issues.
And you're just putting all of them in one spot.
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, we're going to be on the hunt, just, so just to kind of give you guys a heads up on that, so.
Do you have like a, some sort of a price point that you're looking at?
I think the one in North Carolina was a hundred and thirty-two.
One thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight.
So then what do you do with the old one?
Purple wave it for ten dollars probably. I mean, the motor chassis is still good, so.
How old is it?
Ninety.
Nineteen ninety-five. The Roscoe unit is, the truck itself is a ninety-three.
That's why.
It does. It does.
But yeah, we'll, we'll keep the commission updated on our findings anyway, so. Uh, just a reminder, landfill brush pile is going to be opened up, scheduled to be opened up on Saturday, this coming Saturday from eight AM to two. Then I want to talk about Wildcat Construction and the haul road request. I'm going to pass it on. Believe the commission was tagged in a response back, several responses back and forth on they're wanting to utilize some gravel roads in Gary County for this K one seventy-seven construction project. And this map that Jeremy's handing out, I asked him last week to give me a new letter that requesting and another map. And I haven't had nothing, they haven't sent me nothing back. But this map you're looking at was the original map, uh, which I, they were wanting to use old thirteen and they can't because there's two low-rated bridges on that stretch. And then he replied back, oh yeah, we won't use that then. But they still want to use Tri County and Old Thirteen's south of the cutoff road. And that pin mark, about one mile south of the cutoff road where that pin mark is, that'd be the county line. Just so if you're not familiar with what it looks like on the map. But those two little portions, the one next to one seventy-seven, that short half mile leg, that's Tri County. And then the one just to the west of it, that full mile, that's Old Highway thirteen gravel. So everything south there is in Morris County. And I've been in contact with Morris County. And when these haul, when they request a haul route, it's for vehicles and trucks over twenty-four thousand pounds. And they're going to pound the snot out of these gravel roads. They don't need a haul route if it's vehicles under twenty-four thousand pounds. They, you know, their service trucks, mechanic trucks and traders, stuff like that. They don't, they're public road. They can use them whenever. But anything over that twenty-four thousand is just going to tear up these, these roads. And Morris County, we want to work with Morris County. We don't want to butt heads with them. You know, if we say, yeah, you can use them, and then all of a sudden they're going, no, you can't. So they're in the same, they want to see what, what your opinion is on what we want to do here. Schilling already has a road maintenance agreement for use of cutoff between one seventy-seven and K fifty-seven to get them around. And I think that's, this is just a shortcut for Wildcat to make is by using those gravel roads. So there's some crossroad pipes and I believe there's some small concrete box, I think on Old Highway thirteen. But as far as the bridge, there's no, there's nothing on these. But I'd recommend not to allow them to use them. Cause if you open it up and let them use it and then you were down there and yeah, they're going to pound the snot out of them. But just wanted to get your, your take on what we, what we're going to allow and what we're, I guess, going to put up with.
You mean to say Morris County is waiting to see what we do?
Yeah. Cause as you can see, they have, they have more gravel roads that are going to be used, more miles than what we're going to have.
No, I, that's your recommendation. No problems there.
So then what would they use if we don't work them?
Cut off to K fifty-seven? It just shortens their trip up by going down those gravel roads. Cause they, they can't get to the other side of Alta Vista because that bridge is still under construction.
But they're going to be on Old Highway thirteen regardless, correct?
No, no, this is an old map. They.
Oh, you mean they're going to take seventy-seven, one seventy-seven to fifty-seven or what would be vice versa?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Or it says Humboldt Creek cutoff, that arrow goes down to it.
Okay.
That, that road there from one seventy-seven to K fifty-seven, that is the cutoff road.
And that would be the road that they.
That would be the road that they take.
And that's not a gravel road.
And it turns into Humboldt.
Part of it's gravel, part of it's asphalt.
Yes, yes. Which all that, that road there, that portion of Humboldt and that portion of cutoff is already under a road maintenance agreement with Schilling. And they're actually a sub of Wildcat, so.
So that any damage, they'll take care of it on that runoff road. Okay. Well, then I, I would go with your recommendation as well.
Okay.
So who do you, who do you got to deal with on this? Wildcat or KDOT?
Uh, both. Joe Pollak, the area engineer out of Marion would be the KDOT contact. Cause that's, that's one of his projects in his area, so. And then Jeff Blosser, he's with Wildcat, like the construction manager, so. Okay. I'll try.
Can I hear that most time you know?
Uh, yes, I will. Okay. Salt Sand Bunker, foundation and floor up there at the leased property on River Water number four. The concrete was poured by Gusterson on Wednesday of last week, so it looks real good. So we've, they got the approach that goes up to the, the floor yet to pour. And then we'll be ready for the building to get put on, so. Just keeping you up to date. Then on the Asher Property Testill Seal Bids, I've sent them back out and plan on opening up here June nineteenth at eleven AM. Then last week, I sat down with Justin Owens with Call Valley Engineering and we sat through SS four A grant opportunity. It was a webinar. It's round two for SS four A is Safe Streets for All. And I first kind of got wind of this when we did the vulnerability road user deal up in Salina that I went to for KDOT. Uh, the, the programs match sounds really intriguing because it's an eighty-twenty, it's federal funds, but it's an eighty-twenty split. Well, if we're selected, KDOT would pitch in ten percent out of the twenty percent. So our, our, our cost would be ten percent at that. And if we partner with another LPA, it could be a potential another five percent they pitch in. So we would only be on the hook for five percent of that. So it sounds really intriguing. And done some looking and thinking about what we could use those funds for. And the road that really screams at me is Old Forty. And if you think these, the SS four A dollars are intended to assist with bike and pedestrian traffic. Well, if you look at Munson and Rucker, they were not a part of that. Well, they weren't part of the LSRP. We had to have a, some type of safety study done on, on these roads. And Munson and Rucker was never even looked at. Why? Cause they're gravel roads. I mean, that's just, they, they weren't paved roads, so it wasn't included. But you have to have a safety plan in place for whatever road you're looking at for these grant dollars. Well, Old Forty was looked at, I think. I haven't got the final back from KDOT on that or from the contractor that they hired to do the, the study. But number three on that list was Old Forty. And there are several intersections out there that are horrible. Uh, they're, I don't want to say horrible, but they're dangerous. Out there where Union Road meets Old Forty, it's on a real sharp curve and you got concrete that comes up. The site distance is very bad. And the next one would be just east of the rock quarry there where Kansas Falls Road comes out. That's another dangerous intersection. So, but I'm thinking, you know, if we could afford to do a, you know, a good overlay and add some asphalt shoulders on it for bike and pedestrian traffic, the non-motorized traffic, so. Which, you know, after this afternoon, me and Jeremy's got a meeting at a Call Valley, so we can sit down and discuss, you know, what our options could be here for doing this. But if we decide to pull a string, we need to notify KDOT of our intent to apply by May twenty-ninth. So, and then the applications will be due by, to KDOT by July tenth. So just kind of let you know what I'm, another thing we're working on.
How often do these come in?
This is the second round and when you sit through those webinars that the feds put on, it's dry, confusing and ugh, it's horrible. But the one that KDOT did was so much better. It was more clear, it was, it was to the point and it was a lot easier to follow. But these SS four A grants, they, they haven't been out that long, these Safe Streets for All. But this is the second round this year. So I think, you know, we need to, you know, potentially look at something like that, especially if we partner with, say, the city of Junction City, if they wanted to, to improve from Spring Valley Road to US seventy-seven or Dickinson County, if they wanted to improve it from the county line all the way to Chapman. So I'd have to, if I had to speculate, Old Forty is probably the heaviest traveled, second heaviest traveled road we, asphalt roads we have. Uh, so I think if, if we can get something done there, you know, if we could partner with an LPA, it's either five or ten percent, I think it's a win-win, so.
Oh yeah, I think so too. So how do we go with it? Should it be something like, we should have a meeting with the entities that you spoke about and maybe, you know, get our heads together and see what they think?
That is the attempt. You might have to re-gress this.
Running out?
Yeah.
Need bottle of water?
Something. Uh, let's see here. Gary County Sewer Number Four and Water Two Storage Building, milked Gary last week. And he gave us the go-ahead to utilize it for storage. So after this lagoon project is completed, we're going to dispose that old truck box down there by that plant. What it's probably just going to get hauled to hell because it's rusted out and it's in not very good condition. But we will utilize that building up along for that. And then the rain event that happened on back on the ninth, we had quite a few, Frank was scrambling. He had quite a few water leaks in buildings, county office building, register deeds office. That leak still persists and tanker was contacted and they're supposed to show up when it is raining. So they can tear, hopefully get up in there and try to find, they've been up here numerous times since the roof was down and we're still fighting leaks. So we'll keep on by getting it fixed. Uh, courthouse clerk's office, west window and two windows on the north side. Also the third floor door to the fire escape, a bit came, came under the door. Uh, panel office building, arc on the west side, it's those big windows. The old annex, the east window and the United Way office, it was either the window or, we're double checking because we had, what was the company name?
GKW.
GKW.
On the top point project.
They did the tuck pointing on that and they were supposed to seal that north wall because we were, we've had a, a lot of water come in there. So Frank's double checking to make sure it's not, it's, it's not the limestone allowing water to come through, it's the actual window. So we're, he's still investigating all these, so. Emergency management, southeast window is leaking and the extension office had a leak in the men's bathroom around the ceiling vent. So again, building maintenance is assessing all that, trying to get issues fixed as it can, so. Then rodeo arena, light pole, I'm assuming from the storm that came through on the ninth, Daryl Walker called me Thursday on the eleventh to advise me of a leaning pole. And the wind broke, one of the overhead light poles on the south side of the arena. I submitted a claim to K Camp, but I don't know if it's going to do any good because the base of that pole pretty rotten. And that's why she snapped and then, and I'd about imagine all the rest of them are probably about the same condition, so. Called Dave's Electric, Dale did, to see if they could go out there and get that pole taken down. And they were tied up busy, whatnot. So I told Dale, contact Evergy to see if they can get out there. My thought was if we have another thunderstorm come in or a high wind event and that thing's leaning and pulling all those wires, we're going to have a mess of problems. And it's going to get a lot more expensive. So West Star Evergy came in and they got the pole, removed it, laid it down. And the, had no charge, so which was, I was tickled pink with that. But they did tell Dale that there is a business out there called The Green Team or something, where they come in and do work for nonprofit agencies. Uh, for, I don't know if it's for free or to reduce costs, but Dale's still waiting on information back from Evergy on how to get, get in touch with them. But, but again, I did submit that into K Camp for a claim, so just kind of keep you up to date. And I really doubt we could probably get something in by rodeo time. I, just the way that the clock's moving and how, you know, we just find a forty-foot utility pole to put a light bulb on it. But we'll see if we can't get something expedited, but keep you up to date. The last thing I have. is Pinell Building, John's Controls, Backflow Preventer to the current contract. Basically, it's an amendment to add this annual inspection for the backflow preventer. The contract period is from June 1st of '21 to May 31st of 2024. Our annual current costs are $5,921. This is going to be an annual increase of $191. So we can get this backflow preventer put on their schedule to get it inspected annually. But I would recommend to the commission to approve this amendment and for me to sign the contract, or the amendment.
Sub moved.
Second, all the paperwork.
Oh, I forgot to add that. The second sheet, that just shows you the breakdown of all the buildings. And it's got the total amount, that's the current form there. It's got the $5,921, so it's only going to increase by $191. Right, that is all I had.
That's enough. Well, I know I sent you guys, you and Tammy and Gary, about the EDA monies that are coming in from that storm. I sent you just another email saying that they're going to try to get a certain specific amount.
Everything I had to deal with that wind event was basically building damage and K Camp, you know, we went through K Camp to get all that fixed.
No, I know, it's not specifically just for that. There's other stuff, or more preparedness stuff, or, you know, stuff that, it's pretty broad, even training. I'll see if I, I think Gary has the email and it says all that on what, what all it is. But it's pretty, I mean, if we can get, you know, if we can get it, we can get it.
Sure.
We'll try to get it.
You bet.
I just don't know what we need to do. Maybe we should have a meeting.
Put our heads together and come up with some ideas.
Yeah.
A lot of times you get a lot of people in a room discussing it, think outside the box. And, definitely.
Thank you. Quit asking us behind.
Just helps the operations. Take an oil distributor if you can find one.
Did you try EB? Hey, you might want to look over at 10th Street, they're having that auction of all the stuff. I can't think of his name, the electrician. You know, he had all that on East 10th Street. They might have something, they said there's a little bit of everything over there.
There is, I've never seen an oil distributor.
Thank you. I never had one. Well, they're getting everyone.
I know. Some of you, who?
So this month, we had a few things going on. We had to reschedule the Bugabooza that we were doing with the Riley County Health Department. That was on the 11th. We rescheduled it to the 11th. Everything went smooth with that. And then we have summer days coming up, where we're going to run a car seat check lane over on Fort Riley for next month. We have our lake clinic and our weekend clinic like we do every month. But then we're also doing, working a booth on, at Juneteenth. That's going to be for a bone marrow donation. We're going to get people signed up for it, and that way they can be in the database.
Who's doing the, like, withdrawing the bone marrow?
Oh, we're not actually withdrawing the bone marrow. It's, so the way it works, we'll swab their cheeks.
Oh, and that'll tell you whether they're matching or not.
Yeah, yes, we send it off and they get put in the database. And if someone pops up in the U.S. who matches them, then they get a call and it goes from there. It's a pretty good program that helps a lot of people, but we just need more people on the list. And we're working with Family Fun Day. It's going to be car seats and helmets, stuff like that. I changed the format, so it's not specific appointments. It's just telling what appointments, like how many we had, how many no-shows. Our no-show rate is really good, we're at 95%. So people are following through. For internal status, our building, we had a leak in the basement. Nothing was damaged. It was a small leak coming from the air conditioner. Public Works came out and they took care of it right away. So for our county health, since COVID has calmed down quite a bit at the national level, they're not reporting on it anymore. At the state level, things have drawn down. So I figure it's time for us to move to the stuff that we normally do as a health department. I want to give a report on our top priorities. And our number one is STIs. Our numbers are outrageous right now. So for Kansas's average, it's 501 people per 100,000. Ours is almost at 2,000. This one's going to be a huge task we got to take on, but we'll be able to do it. We just got to start from the basics and figure out why our numbers started skyrocketing. And I believe it's attached with the teen births, because those numbers are extremely high too. We'll figure it out, and as time goes, I'll keep reporting on it. That's all I've got.
Are those suicides including the ones on Fort Riley?
Uh, yes, they are. Is there any question?
Is that all of Fort Riley, or does private county insurance some of those?
I'm not sure how they're reporting it, so it's probably all of Riley County. Or I don't know if they're putting it into EPITrax based off their address and they have it split between the zip codes. I can find out more on that.
I know it was a topic of conversation with the general when he spoke at the Military Affairs Breakfast. Someone brought that up. Yeah, there's an issue there.
Oh yeah, very much so.
Yeah, we're more than double the national rate, so we'll figure it out. And there's a whole process to this, it's just disease investigation and then mitigations put in place. And I mean, it's been successful using these methods before. That's why our other numbers are down now, because that's what we were targeting. But when we're targeting that, these numbers pulled up. But we'll get it taken care of.
Sounds like something that needs to be addressed. Did you get all the financial information that Tammy needed?
Yes.
I don't have any numbers. Second, and third, son.
Mine is so much faster than Public Works, they have a lot of details they got to go into.
You got it on your board, they come over and fix the leak, you know, they do that everywhere. Well, we're better than that alone, if you guys are ready, you ready?
I wasn't sure if you need a break or how we're good.
No. Don't hold you up, you got here early.
Get me a pink blazer, be like a girl.
Should I get a little one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He'll be here later. Thank you.
You're not coming up?
I'll come with you, I'll be here once.
You would? Nice.
It's my second time to see you guys within six months. So my name is Yana Ross, I'm a risk manager with K Camp. And I'm here to present a risk management award to Gary County in the amount of $8,438.08.
Thank you.
Gary had Burgess, the Director of Emergency Services, did excellent job, was leading his risk management committee. And the county did outstanding job, was some improvement we've seen was the inspection of all the facilities. So Gary made sure that the report was made on each of the buildings, which was great. That way, you guys are able to stay on top of things and prevent the losses. So, and then the training has always been great. So the defensive driving training for all the employees is reading very high percentage, so. And I, there's a few recommendations out there for improvement. It is on the letter, I'm not going to read over that. And I'm always open if Gary has some questions or I can present to his committee on things that can be improved and even get a higher award next year. But your county is definitely one of the highest scoring counties, so you're all doing a great job with risk management.
Thank you.
That's good. Very good job.
Any questions for me, or?
What do you make of this?
Yeah, he's like, ooh, he cracks that whip when you miss one meeting, you better be there next time.
They can miss one meeting, right?
Yes, yes. One thing is that on the left side, there's all the programs that K Camp does offer. And I don't know, I know that Roden Bridge was here before. So we do have, and I'm not sure if he's aware, that we have Rhodes Scholar tuition reimbursement program. Gary County has been, I looked back in history, and for risk management award, you guys from the beginning, I think close to 100,000 in reimbursements based on your contributions. And then Gary always utilizes the Risk Avoidance Grant. And so Rhodes Scholar is also available out there. If any of the employees go to LTAP training, it is also reimbursement-based. Thank you.
I know, I know he's aware of it, I don't know that he was aware of the reimbursement.
Yeah, so there's $50, so it's based on the contribution. So I'll be able to give him an exact amount if he gives, like, sends me an email. It's $50 per person per course. So if they do it online or in person, mostly those courses are about 75. So most of it is reimbursable. And based on your contributions, you're probably looking at about at least 10, 15 people that can take it pretty much for no cost.
And there's different steps to it, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, there's different classes.
Correct, correct, yes. There's on snow plowing, there's culverts, there's also supervisory classes, which is a great training for supervisory roles for Roden Bridge. Yeah, those are outstanding classes, for sure.
Awesome, well, thank you so much.
Yeah, but I'll be happy if you reach out to me and would you like a check? Or do I give it to Gary?
You can.
Give it to me and I'll do the paperwork.
There you go.
Okay, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Oh, I sent it in, but I haven't.
Thank you all, you have a good night, thank you.
Now Gary, you need to turn that check in.
Already in.
So how were the roads on the way back? I heard there was a semi jacked up.
There was, it was pretty wet.
Pretty good out there. Eat good today.
Was it?
I wasn't going to be back in time for this.
I was going to tell when you walked in, but what's it been here?
Point nine thirty, we were out by 10:15, you could pick up.
Yeah, wow. $8,438.
I didn't know that we didn't get. Oh, she wants to move.
Yeah. But we don't talk about that. Well, that's good. She doesn't get swung into.
Yeah.
You the boss.
Yeah. How scary is that?
I know. Worse than, that's like them curtain shorts.
Oh, thanks, Gary.
Especially with all the responsibilities, because this is a timeline, a greenhouse and a central station.
Hold on. I think Mr. Tyson is going to call in.
No problem.
I think that's the new man.
Trish, I got that email that she sent.
Yeah, just, he just got some information. It's, it's just more information. He's been meeting with the state.
Yeah, because we need to send that first.
Well, that's what he's calling at the EDA, and I hadn't seen the official email, but I figured because you were the, you know, you're the one that filed that. Did you ever get the official one? That we were getting the money or that it was available to the?
See, and that came through Department of Commerce, which doesn't, which we never see. We don't see that one.
Well, then how, I mean, I don't understand.
He gets it through something else because Commerce, there's so many when, when there's litigation.
He's just the director of Flit Hills.
Yeah.
So, I was thinking as Gary County, you would be the one getting the?
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes I get notified on some of those and some, but especially where it came from Commerce. I don't know.
Yeah, because I mean, they have us listed, so at least, you know, we're eligible, so I thought maybe.
Twenty percent match.
What?
Twenty percent match.
Hey.
Twenty's twenty.
Yeah.
Or better than twenty-five.
Exactly. But I, you know, maybe we can have a meeting, Tammy.
Yeah, read, read the note and see what's eligible.
Yeah, because it's pretty broad, actually. It looked like it was pretty broad and, and, you know, it wasn't, it didn't have to be just the stuff that was damaged, but you do prevention and training and that kind of stuff.
Most of mitigation stuff is that way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It works not as, you know, Corey thought maybe it was just for damaged stuff, but.
No, no. The damage stuff, insurance.
That's what he said.
Theresa go.
Theresa, that's a move.
You better hurry up.
So, how long the little circus, when you went, how long was it?
Yeah, it started at ten. I drove straight over afterward, so I don't know what happened after, a little after eleven, I think. Probably about an hour.
She had fun?
Yeah.
It's always tight time at school, at the end of school.
It is.
And the teachers are ousted in a count of seconds.
Lot of activities that you're supposed to attend at this county.
Yes.
It'll learn. That's when kids dress up, some are lions, some are monkeys, or some are feral. Fine.
Yeah.
Those are ones, would you like it?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would just say the general. I think she has a thing for insurance reimbursement or something like that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're on vacation now?
Vacation, yeah. I'm on vacation. Gotta do that inside. On vacation.
You're on vacation?
Yeah. Eight thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars makes sense. Definitely that quarter. Gary was in second.
Yeah.
So, I was thinking we were looking towards something specific. Well, and we also get like two thousand dollars for the rag.
Yeah, but I thought this was just like, one of those one year missions. I was in the Greek, you know, recently.
The public works for some kind of cabinet for, you know. Well, their hazard is wasted up.
Oh, that's right.
And then they're gonna use some of it for the ball or zephrum, I think. The ball, I think that's the one. That's the one I was thinking this one was.
Yeah.
Because he didn't know how much this one is gonna be, so we can use it for the.
This one seems a little.
Yeah, it's usually only about six. So, we must have done a little bit. And I think those dollars were N C I Ps, so we'll have to ask for sure. Then again.
Yeah.
Did you want to go?
Actually, we can.
Are we in public comments?
Were you guys here for public comment?
Well, we're here for everything else too. Everything else too, put it up there.
Public comments now.
Yeah, if you wanna come to comment now.
Hello, my name is Kathy Tremont, and I'm just representing myself as a, as a citizen. But I had two, two, two ideas or two issues that I wanted to, to talk about. Number one was the statement made by Commissioner Giordano about having more control and over elected officials and to make this resolution that you did to remove the specific duties and give them to another appointed person so that we can control them better. And as a taxpayer, people need to be aware of the fact that there's reason why you have elected officials. And if they're not performing their duties, then the citizens have that ability to, to not elect them the next election. They are statutory, and when they're taken away to give to another department, as it was done here, that just makes it so that commissioners are having control over this appointed official and micromanaging to me that office. The former clerk, I feel like did her job well, whether she made mistakes along the way. That is very, could possibly very well happen. But in the twenty-three years that she was here, I think she did a good job. And I think it was, was very appalling, to say the least, that Commissioner Giordano made the comments about a clerk that was going out after she had done her job. She never got any acknowledgement of her job for twenty-three years serving Gary County. And I think that's appalling. I have my question that I have is when you're moving the HR director under the finance department, again, what does that do? Does it, she's still gonna make a hundred thousand dollars? Because she's not gonna be a department head any longer. So, that's concerning to me as a citizen, the cost that's gonna be incurred there. Also, when you take the two employees from the clerk's office and put them into this other department, the ability for, for the new clerk to come in, which again, I question that because statutorily, the deputy clerk has say over what happens in that department until that vacancy is filled. And I'm not really sure that occurred, which again, I have a problem with that because there should have been conversations with Courtney, with Teresa, and the county commission. So, statutorily, I have a problem with that, and I, I do plan to look into that.
Yeah, what statute are you, I'm referring to? Because it, it's the county commission's responsibility by statute to pay the bills.
Well, I guess you could, you could question that the statute.
Because nowhere, nowhere in the Association of Counties or Association of County Clerks does it say that that's the responsibility of the county clerks. And you talk out of both sides of your mouth, Kathy, because you bad mouth Rebecca, I don't know how many times, to me personally. And the Republican Party has reported Rebecca numerous times, but yet they talked about how bad she was doing and how many mistakes she made. So, you can come in here and say.
I don't think.
Oh, I guarantee you, I will take a lie detector test.
Well, I would too. I would too.
You have talked bad about her. So, if you want to come and.
You're not gonna bully me.
I'm not trying to bully you, but don't come in here and say word with my mouth.
This is public comment, and I'm making my comments. So, that's, that is, that's, you guys need to.
Okay, well, then go and look at whatever.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that statutorily.
Statutorily, what, statutorily says what? You keep on saying statutorily, but you're not telling me what you're saying that we did wrong.
I think it's twelve thirty-nine oh two. That, that the clerk, until the clerk takes, until, when, in the absence, the clerk shall, that's the only elected official that shall appoint a, a deputy. I didn't, as treasurer, I didn't appoint a deputy. I had supervisors in my department. The clerk has to appoint one. And she, in her vac, in her absence, Teresa fills that department until that, that vacancy is filled. And I'm not sure that that, that happened. But nonetheless, I have, you know, those are, that's what my concern is, is, you know, the cost to the county when you take those two, two offices, two people, they still have, they did other, other things. They just didn't do A P and they just didn't do payroll. They did other things, so in the meantime, who's gonna, who's gonna do those? And I guess Courtney needs to be here to, to, and she's, she's coming, obviously. But, you know, just in visiting with her, she asked about filling, filling those other depart, two positions because that leaves the clerk's office with three employees to do the other duties. And if you take and put those two employees back into, under the finance person, and you have to fill those positions again, that's a cost to the county. I mean, and, you know, these things that you, you guys do, it just seems like it's done and, and there's no thought given to it. And, and the repercussion is all the employees and the people, and I go around and talk to the employees, still I do. And the people that I've talked to, that, you know, they have no clue of, of what's going on. Every day, they, they say they're doing this, and then they turn around and do something else, and they're, and I, I just, I'm just really concerned overall about where the county's going. And with this stuff, and, and again, I, I want it, I want an answer as to when the H R goes under the finance, she's no longer department head, will she still be making a hundred thousand dollars? That's the question that I have mainly. I've expressed my concern, and that's my entitlement as a citizen of Gary County. Because I'm, I'm not gonna just keep watching all this nonsense going on, and it's nonsense.
Our, our finances are stronger. Our finances are stronger now than when you were in office, Kathy.
Well, they weren't, well, they weren't, they weren't bad to begin with.
Yes, they were. They were awful. They were sloppy.
Well, you throw everything into a bucket now and how are you supposed to know what's going on?
You have no idea how budgets work.
Well, I don't think you do either.
And I told you, you can come in and talk to.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, Trish, you would have taken the time to sit down with the department heads and figure out what's going on in Gary County. You would have found out.
You refuse to sit down with me. I'm not going to argue with you.
I'm, well, I'm.
Your five minutes is over.
Well, I'm going to get my last two cents in that you needed to talk to all the department heads in order to find out and yourself. And I know for a fact, you know nothing about budgets either. You weren't part of the budget process open the police department. You merely sat in there. So.
And I've learned so much more being here with Kat, with Tammy. So maybe you should sit down with her and so you could understand it. Cause our, it was sloppy here.
It said public comments were over.
Well, I can talk. I can talk. And when you say that we are stat, we statutorily violated something, I take offense to that because that is a total lie and you pulling something out of your hat.
I didn't say that violation.
Yes, you did.
I said I questioned the fact.
You questioned the fact of a violation of a statute. It's statutory. So when you come in here and accuse the commission of that, I'd appreciate it if you had your facts straight.
Keith, do you have anything to say as, as the, the commission chairman?
We have, we have Betsy's researches and Betsy might do a better job than explaining than I can. But if we have reasons and we can validate those reasons or facts and just say, you know, yes, we talked to Teresa, we got input from her, we got input from the other two ladies, um, so we did do all that. And then Betsy came up with what I think is statutorily legal is how we arrived at it. And as far as, yes, I, I can't answer your question about H R. I still don't know that. But it was our, well, it's my intentions that we backfill those two positions that are moving. Now, is that more cost to the county? Absolutely.
So then on the H R, uh, since she's going to be answering to Tammy, what, do you guys know what her title's going to be?
Uh, she's still the benefits. She is in charge of the benefits.
What's her title? She's not an H R director now, correct?
She is an H R, she's an H R, I, she's still the H R director. We haven't made any changes.
But you just, in your resolution, you said she will answer to Tammy.
She will answer to Tammy under the payroll.
Director, answer to a director. So you have a director, answer to a director.
Uh, when it comes to the payroll, yeah.
No, but you put H R will answer to there.
Cause having payroll in two different departments is absolutely crazy.
I, I get that. I understand that, but is she a director?
We haven't talked, we haven't even.
But that's the other thing back.
That's a good question. I mean, it is a good question.
What's her title? What's her pay range? What's her, what's she going to get paid? She going to pay a hundred thousand dollars for an H R specialist? I mean, does that fit into your study for the wages?
We'd have to have it evaluated like we're, like we did for the clerk's position.
So you, you guys didn't think about this before and do this before?
You know, for somebody who almost had our hospital closed, I really, I, 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 this is all personal. This is all personal.
Trish, this is not, no, we're talking about now, we're talking about H R, not the hospital. Get over the past. Get over the past, Trish. Go past it.
But you guys, I would like to answer that. We talked about this this morning. I don't know if you were tuned in, but.
No.
Uh, we are going to have a 90-day introductory period where we're evaluating this stuff. So.
Okay.
Um, what we intend to do, we have to evaluate for those first 90 days to make sure that it actually makes sense and works the way we're thinking. So we don't have an answer today, but in those 90 days, that's when we'll figure out, okay, this works, this doesn't, make adjustments. We'll have new job descriptions, those things will be taking place. And, and we did discuss that this morning, um, earlier on and like I said.
Yeah, no, I just go by what the resolution, what you guys passed, they passed the resolution.
Yeah.
So.
So you move the employees over to this department and then to, in 30 days or whenever, you'll decide whether it's working or not and then put them back?
No, I mean, it'll be working.
I mean, if there's an election.
Let your answer.
Question, answer your question first and then you can, if you have another question, I'll, I'll answer it as well. But the, the intent is to move them over there. They will continue to do the jobs that they're doing, but we also intend to increase their duties. So there's going to be things that they assist with analytically and procedurally. So if all of those things work the way we intend to, then that's what we would be adjusting because right now they are just called clerks. And so if they adjust their job duties and the things that we expected to be changed for them, then we'll reevaluate to the title that we're thinking they're going to be called. But we don't want to call them that until we know that this is all going to work out. So they could just be a clerk or it could be that they become an analyst or a specialist. So it really depends on what we expect and whether it truly happens or not, or whether we have to reevaluate additional jobs.
We should be waiting until, um, that Courtney's here to talk about that because that is, oh, that is hard.
So then on the, the pay ranges and everything, are they going to be decreased or increased? Or are they going to?
I mean, I wouldn't expect that they would decrease because they're not going to decrease their job duties.
Well, if they go under a, under your guys' deal, it's a maximum out of certain criteria.
So, and even with Ms. Malcho's, um, we're looking at her overseeing the payroll process. So, um, when you say that she wouldn't be doing the same thing, she may not be doing, I mean, she may not be doing complete direct director duties, but she would be taking on overseeing entire payroll process.
No, I get that and oversee, but that's a director to director because.
I've seen it before. I mean, it has occurred that way because she's a, a specialist in, in human resources. And so I have seen directors report to directors when they're not in the, I mean, you wouldn't see a financial director report to a financial director. So, um, whether that'll adjust or not, I mean, we can't tell you exactly, but those are all things that we'll evaluate in those first 90 days.
Well, that wasn't, uh, that was part of my concern, but the other part was, and we visited with Courtney, is the ability to hurt, hurt bill as position because as I said, the positions that are moving over there, they're not, they weren't just payroll and they weren't just A P. They did a lot of other things as well.
They didn't do a lot. We had deeds and, um, and they assisted with elections. So in looking at the duties that have been being performed.
Well, they did taxes as well.
Can I just finish before you start? I mean, I can't finish what I'm saying if you don't let me speak. So what we're looking at is in the physicians or the duties that are left, it would be potentially one full-time position. And then of course during elections, she may have additional positions. Um, we have the presidential election coming up, so that's going to be huge and she can have a lot of extra employees that she wouldn't want to have. So yes, it does all have to be evaluated and we don't know where it's going to fall out yet. And because we've changed financial software, the duties that the clerks were doing in their office have also changed.
Well, they still do real estate records and they still do taxation, help with the tax levies. So, you know, it's not just those minimal things that you said, there's other things in the clerk's office.
I'm not trying to minimize it at all. I'm just talking about the two things that Jamie and Jesse actually took on in addition.
Well, and I guess Courtney, and that's where, you know, you need to have some, some good discussion as to what you missed out on part of that.
Well, and I mean, as an employee of, of Gary County, she will have those discussions with other Gary County employees. Um, if you want to ask questions. But she's still an employee while Gary County.
When it comes to getting benefits and things like that, she does get those things. But I think what Tammy's trying to say is somebody that works within this entire aspect of the county, we understand the difference between an employee and elected official. Like, now she's trying to put, say that her employment is dependent upon everything else. That's on the commission.
I don't want to take anything away from Tammy because, oh, I appreciate your work and I know you've done a good job, but the fact of it is, you're a finance director and there is elected officials. And when you start to take hold here from here, which appears to be happening, then, you know, that's, that's concerning to me as a former elected official because I know that it's, it's been done in some counties or tried to be done. And if there's not strong people in those positions, then that's what's going to happen. And that's what's happening in Gary County right now.
No, that's what's happened in the past in Gary County.
Into the, into one umbrella and then that way the Commissioner Giordano will think she has.
That's our responsibility is the monies, the taxpayer monies. That's what we're elected for, Kathy. We are elected to pay those bills. We are elected to make sure they're done. I, we did not have, we didn't know half the stuff that went on with our monies until Kat, until Tammy got here. And, and if Rebecca was still here, I would have asked to have the payroll taken out of there because she made a forty-seven thousand, forty-one thousand dollar mistake that cost the taxpayers.
What did it cost them?
Forty-one thousand dollars in taxes and penalties.
I didn't think you guys have paid it yet. Have you paid it yet?
We're, we have to.
Have you got the deal saying that that's what you guys are getting to pay? But I thought that was the maximum that you was going to have to pay for the penalties?
So we've already paid seven thousand of it and we have to.
It shouldn't have been a penny. It shouldn't have been, this wasn't a mistake. This was a power play by an elected official because she thought she was in charge of it.
Was that in the middle of the software?
No, it wasn't. She was told that she was supposed to pay those monies directly. C I C told her that. H R offered to help her that. C I C's the new program and she knew and her employees reminded her that she needed to pay it and it wasn't paid. So please don't come in here because that is our responsibility and nobody stood up to Rebecca when she played those little games and it has cost, the same thing happened in COVID. We had to pay.
And she's not here to defend herself.
Well, I, I'm sorry, you're the one who brought this up. I wasn't even going to bring it up, but don't come in here and act like we're not doing the best thing for the county. You just don't understand. It's over your head.
Okay.
You have a lot of room to talk. You have a lot of room.
Time, time's up on public comment. What do you have for us, Teresa?
Two change orders. I didn't send them out because there were just two.
Should I remember?
I don't have any questions. I accept a change order.
Second, I'm very.
Aye.
I have the minutes from the eighth. Um, Keith, what do you want me to add? Uh, we were talking about the L V T R funding. Since then, a deal 252 would, I need to add wood text on text message from the county if the governor signs seven of the eight, so I'll make that change. I got a couple of other grammatical errors that I made. And then did you want me to add about Alex or? You have, did I miss Alex talking at Main Street meetings? I didn't put it in here because he said, I may not be here. So I didn't put it in there.
I, yeah. It's not a big deal.
So that was it for the eighth. And, um, I don't have the names printed up yet because somebody is on my computer.
Oh, okay.
So he could, um, approve them and I'll use the same.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I'm in.
Second, I'm very sorry.
Aye.
That's all I got.
Betsy, 19302 is the reference to the county clerk in the deputy in her absence.
Okay. Yeah, I feel real comfortable with the statutory, of the statutory authority we set forth. Um, if you have a copy of that resolution, um, you can look at all those. There's also a, brings an A G opinion, um, that has quite a bit of info in it.
I was looking at another A G opinion that said that she had to have factual and whatever to determine that those duties needed to be moved.
Right. And I, I, I feel good about that. I do. I mean, I've done statutorily. Would you like the list? We are.
I'm talking to you.
I'm just asking.
I think statutorily, the commission came up with some, uh, with a list of facts and a list of things, um, that supported that. I mean, I think it's two different issues, whether you agree with it or not, or whether it's statutory or not. I'm real comfortable with those statutory issues.
It seems like the, uh, with Teresa being in that position until she was appointed, then how can that happen?
Because we have the authority to do it.
Trish, I'm talking to.
Well, I'm talking, I, you're talking to my employee and I'm telling you that it is our, you're, you're putting her on the spot and I'm telling you that it is our.
I'm just having a conversation with her.
Well, I mean, she could be like O Pat and just say, hey, um, I'm not talking to you. I'm not your attorney. I'm just saying, we have the authority. We're the ones that made the decision. It was, it was cleared by our county counselor. And it would have been done, it, it would have been done if Rebecca was still here. This has nothing to do with Courtney at all, at all.
Nothing was said about Courtney.
You brought up Courtney, you sued several.
I said that I, my concern with what happened with the timeframe between the time that Teresa was acting as the county clerk and the time that Courtney was appointed as the new county clerk. And it seemed like there was a lot of things that happened hurriedly to get that done.
I, I told Rebecca before I left on vacation, I was going to ask that that be moved, removed from her office. This, it wasn't even before she even put in her notice. It is something that should have been done a while ago because we are the ones responsible for paying the bills. There are tons of, of late fees that we didn't know about. There are inefficiencies and sloppy budgeting that we did not know about.
There were still late payments now?
I disagree it should, because we wanted to get through the conversion to C I C before. I mean, I think that was the whole goal, was to get through that and.
For what?
To get to this point where we got to.
As far as moving, moving them?
Yes, yes. Because they were all in that training together. And so we were seeing how C I C went. So to say it should have been a long time ago is just a false statement because we wanted to make sure we had the conversion for C I C and the training, which Rebecca and several others participated in.
Well, my opinion is that we should have, this is something that if I knew that we could have done it earlier, I would have because I felt it is our responsibility for this money.
Well, I know you told Rebecca because you told me that, that you, that was what you wanted to do, but that's.
Well, how many more mistakes and, and inefficiencies do we need to put up with? I mean, it would, it, the way that, the way that she had things running were sloppy and inefficient.
Well, it wasn't.
And you would be even afraid with that, Keith. I, I'm sorry that it's an open session, but she was an elected official and, and this, this, this conversation is coming up because we are doing this and that is one of the main reasons why we are doing it.
Well, no, I, I went along with it based on what, whether it was legal with Betsy. I didn't have a problem with that. But to go back to now, Rebecca, who's not here, I think is.
But I mean, that is, we're not doing this just because Rebecca left, is my point.
But quick bringing up the past, we focus on the future.
No, I totally agree with that.
Okay, then, then we're done.
Okay. Okay.
So he's supposed to call, or we're supposed to call him?
Who?
Alex.
I have a question online for.
So is, is he calling or not?
I just asked if, are you about ready to call him? He said, yes, I should probably call you, and he hasn't answered yet, so I can call him.
I don't really know how the phone works.
You can just dial the number and then hit.
I think he's calling out.
Yes?
Hello?
Hi there. Hang on a minute. Okay.
Can you hear us?
Hello, yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
Uh, I've been trying to listen in, uh, Corral Kids. I think it's important to share the list of, uh, information that we did find with, uh, Kathy and, uh, everyone that's there. Uh, just, uh, kind of be frank, we, we tried to work and make sure that things like this have been kept in house. And try to work around these types of things. However, it hasn't been a, a pretty good workaround. And so I understand that there are some people here upset about decisions that were made. Uh, I kind of agree, we, we, we should have acted quicker than we did. And disagree with some of the things that's happening here today, and I'm sorry I'm not there, but I'm trying to, trying to, uh, be a chaperone today, but, uh, if you guys, yeah, if you guys have any questions, we're, we're open looking, got nothing to hide, so.
Okay. Um, well, next on the agenda is, um, discussion or an update on the M P C. So Betsy, want to give us an update?
Um, well, we sent the letter you guys signed last week about the M P C. Uh, we met with the city, um, everyone that was in attendance, uh, it was me and Mr. Livingston and, uh, Commissioner Giordano, um, Mr. Binkle, Mr. Stites, and Chief Williams. So we also talked about the annex bill, and about when they would leave the annex. Um, I think we came up with what we thought were some good dates to bring back to our commissions. Um, we talked about the M P C, that they would quit taking cases August one, and that, and then it would dissolve on October first. Um, and what, uh, everybody was, uh, excited to take that back to their commission, and that was a, uh, a consensus that we had reached. Um, we also spoke a little bit, I guess, in that meeting about, uh, funding for the animal shelter. And, uh, Commissioner Giordano asked for a written request for that by Friday, if the city wanted to pursue uh, funding for the animal shelter through the county. Um, I later learned that, uh, Mr. Binkle contacted you and was pretty aggressive on, and said that they didn't have any warning. Um, I had a previous meeting with the, uh, city on March twenty-fourth. Um, and, uh, Mr. Overston was there, and, uh, we had talked about possibly, that there was a possibility that we'd want to, uh, leave the M P C. Um, at that point, so I was surprised that he didn't think there was any warning. Um, on Friday, we received a letter from the city, um, that, uh, I'm unaware of the city having a meeting between our meeting and Friday, but, uh, they had said that they weren't sure about those dates anymore on the M P C. Um, so I'm not sure, uh, where we stand on that, but the dates that we agreed on to bring back to the commission were, uh, August one to quit taking cases on October one for the county to leave the M P C.
And everybody seemed to be fine with that at the meeting, so I don't know what happened between them.
Yeah, it was a pleasant meeting, I thought.
It, it was, and the, the, uh, police department asked for sixty days, and I was fine with that, that you have a lot of stuff in there, and, um, you know, but the passive aggressiveness of, of Mr. Binkle attacking you and, and making snide comments about this was just jumped on them, and that he might close the parking lot across from the courthouse and take the carpet, and, you know, I just, it unnecessarily, unnecessary, and, uh, I don't particularly like those little games, so it needs to stop.
July seventeenth was the move out date for the annex that was, uh, kind of consensus in the meeting, so we weren't going to present that to, uh, Commissioner Tyson and Asher today too.
But now you said, so now you said you want to change the dates?
Well, July seventeenth, I think, is still the date, and, um, frankly, since they haven't had a meeting to discuss with their commission, um, the dates that we reached consensus with, uh, I'm not sure how they're not okay with them, if they haven't talked to their commission about it, but I think, uh, August one and October one are still the dates where the county at least is looking at, and where, uh, we said that we were going to, uh, in good faith, present those to the commission, and so that's what we're, we're gonna do, because that's what we agreed on.
Is that part of us to agree today?
Well, I wasn't gonna make the decision for us without talking to.
Right.
You know, I, I figured you wouldn't mind because it wasn't a unnecessary, you know, it wasn't unreasonable request, but I told them that we would talk to, I would talk to you guys on Monday.
And that, that's part of the negotiation.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, we have, we're talking to you today. I was just, I was just appalled, but he acted like he didn't know anything about it. You know, I heard it coming.
Well, he mentioned that in the meeting, but, I mean, Britton and, and Betsy knew that wasn't the truth. I mean, they had been speaking about it.
Mr. Overston, you were at the March twenty-fourth meeting, did we talk about it?
We're the ones.
So.
So, um, anyway, Commissioner Tyson, uh, where are you on those proposed dates?
You good with that?
One minute.
You good with those dates?
I can't hear you.
Are you good here with Betsy, son?
Yeah, I, I had talked to her about the meetings and stuff earlier.
Are you good with the extension?
Yep, uh, they're all right with it, that's fine, because we're moving forward, uh, so.
You think, is it a, does it require a vote, does it?
I mean, I think we've already voted to, uh.
Pull out?
To pull out, so I think that, um, as long as there's consensus that you're okay with those dates.
Right, I guess so. Well, then they got, they got a meeting tomorrow night, so we'll see what shakes out of that. Okay, um, next would be, uh, U County Clerk salary discussion, which, um, included an H R and Finance Director on this one. I think you sent everybody to range. Your department had selected a point.
I did, I'll admit, I don't know why that was, that's being considered. Uh, we did our market study last year, and an unbiased third party determined what the pay scales were, or the positions. So what somebody else is currently making right now, I don't understand. I mean, I'm perfectly fine that you asked what I provided it, I just didn't understand.
Well, in conversation with Betsy, she, she definitely, I ask you.
Okay, and I, I see see her on the, on the information as well, so she didn't receive it, I hope.
So, I'm not sure. So am I correct that your range was from sixty-five seven to a hundred and a quarter, somewhere near?
Yes, um, Tammy has it for her.
Yeah, sixty-five, seven oh two to one oh three eight forty-four.
Congratulations, let's take off on the discussion.
You're the chairman. I'd like to see where you're at.
Well, just spitballing originally, um, and I'm still kind of, I just pulled this number out of the air, but I, um, I don't want to lowball the new clerk, but I think it's pretty obvious that you don't, um, you know, you don't go clear to the top either, so I was trying to come somewhere in the middle, and so I did some math on it, and uh, I came up with eighty thousand, which would be fourteen thousand, three hundred over the very bottom, but it'd be twenty-four thousand roughly under the, the top. So that's kind of where I'm at on it. And that had nothing to do with seeing your stuff up. You and I already had that discussion.
Well, I, you know, it, you know, just a year ago, um, I had to fight to get seventy thousand for a clerk, or a treasurer that had forty-some years. I wanted to give her seventy-five, you guys didn't even want to give her that. Um, I, I think you guys both wanted sixty-eight, and they finally settled on seventy, but somebody that has been with the county and has the county, that particular office experience for forty, forty-five, forty-six years, I, please tell me how, why, why is this different? That was just a year and a half ago.
Well, I think that salary study really changed a lot of that. Um, because you're talking about the treasurer, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the treasurer now is living eighty-three. So I think we were all kind of underestimating till the salary study was done, so that's kind of where I was basing this on.
I don't even think the salary study had been mentioned then.
No.
No, I think he's saying that that's where she's at now, that he's admitting that they underestimated the value of the position at that time.
So you're good with this study now. Um, you know, we do studies, and I, I reached out to Courtney because I know Courtney, I think she, um, is gonna bring a lot of great things, but she, she has leadership experience and she is very organized. But as far as experience for what the job entails, there is no requirement. I mean, all you have to do is be a U S citizen and be eighteen years old to be a clerk, to be an elected official. And, um, whereas some of the other duties or other places that you have picked out, um, require, uh, grant experience, they require degrees. Um, I don't want to lowball you either, but we do these, these studies, and I think that, um, for years, we've always, you know, wanted to take care of, we put our heart in it and not our head when we're thinking about things, and, um, I, you know, I don't think she starts at the bottom, but I think seventy is a good, um, uh, starting range for somebody that has no public experience. Um, she does have, like I said, she does have supervisor experience, she has a little bit of, you know, banking experience, she has a lot of banking experience, but I don't know if it's gonna be transferable to what we do in the clerk's office, but, uh, I guarantee you she's gonna do a great job as far as organizing stuff. But I think seventy is, is, is where I'm looking.
Alex?
Yeah, uh, I, I spoke with, uh, am I, yeah, all right, I'm sorry, I thought I was muted. Uh, I spoke with Betsy and, uh, Crystal about this, and, uh, just being new, uh, not knowing a lot of the duties, I was thinking, uh, anywhere between the sixty-five and seventy thousand mark. Uh, I'm, uh, that's, I think that's where I'm at.
Did you guys see the, um, well, you, you made mention of it, Kansas County Clerk's, uh, election, election officials association and all the duties that go with your job. I think, based on that, there's a lot, you know, I get it, no experience of being a clerk, but I think she's gonna have a lot of stuff to do, and I think we've got people being paid more that don't have nearly the responsibilities of clerk. And I know that she'll have good help in here, but I just think that, I think that's just a little too low, um, and that's, that's where I stand.
May I speak on this?
Yes.
I don't know Courtney. I'm looking forward to working with her, to meeting her, to, to, you know, seeing what we can do to better the county. Um, I want to speak, however, to why we did this market study, and that was because our rates were all over the place. Information was, uh, brought to the commission at different times, different places. Hey, we're having trouble filling this, can I have an increase for my employees? When we hired Ted to do our market study, um, it was done intentionally as a third party, unbiased. They didn't, you know, any employee, everything was based solely on the job description and their length of time that they're experienced in that. Um, it wasn't based on performance. That would be going forward, do they deserve an increase or not? Um, I do not believe it is fair to anyone to compare the clerk's position with any other job that's not in the same grade. Just because somebody is making more than what the clerk's position does is not reflective on the person, it's reflective on the job description and how long that person has experience for. So by comparing this position to other positions, it's not really relevant. It's like comparing apples to beef jerky. Um, but it's the responsibilities, the education, uh, the knowledge, and things like that that's taken into consideration. If we throw that out, then I'm just wondering which position will be next, and we will, it will ignore the market study, and then how long before we just put a whole market study out for window? We did this for a reason. The clerk's position was placed on that. Um, the determination for where to place somebody is supposed to be based on their education and experience in that position. And Courtney may, may be great, and I hope she is, and it's much easier for us to look at that and say, okay, um, let's give her some more credit for this because she's doing great, than if we start her up higher and she has struggles, you know, learning something or processing something, or things change, um, it would be much more difficult for us to say, okay, um, these duties were taken away. And I'll be back, but this job description was developed, and she was placed on this market study prior to us removing a couple of the duties from it. So it is still higher up there probably than where it would be placed today. So I do think that the seventy thousand recommended by Commissioner Giordano and the sixty-five to seventy by Commissioner Tyson is probably relevant for somebody that has no public service experience, but does have other leadership and some transferable experience.
And I, I would be willing, uh, if we go with the seventy to reevaluate in a year. I mean, I, I would not have a problem with that. But I need to, you know, not think about, you know, it's hard when we live in a small town and we know everybody and, and, you know, but and I thought about this all weekend, and, you know, if I didn't know Courtney, what would I do? And, and that's what I would do.
Well, I don't know. Betsy, do you have any thoughts on it?
What?
I know you.
Well, I mean, I think that, uh, you're at eighty, and it seems like, uh, Commissioner Giordano, Commissioner Tyson are at seventy. Um, what was the exact market study?
Sixty-five thousand, seven two hundred and three, I think.
Before we took the duties out.
Yeah, that was, uh, including eighteen and payroll oversight, so, I mean, you're about ten thousand of the carers, so.
What's the difference? Call me good.
Well, that's kind of where I was, I, I would, I'd negotiate for seventy-five.
Could I ask to have Courtney come up and?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'd like to hear from Courtney.
Be hired or not?
Hi. Same Courtney. You want me to sit or stand?
Whatever you want to do, I'll just, I'll just sit here.
Are you asking a question?
No, we just would like to hear what you, um.
What's your thoughts?
Yeah, no, um, I obviously know I'm coming in with absolutely no clerk experience from that office specifically since I'm coming externally. Um, but I think that says a lot about I'm up for a challenge, it sounds like. Um, I'm ready for it. I definitely work hard, um, I'm dedicated to this community. Um, right, like she said, I have extensive management experience, leadership experience, um. All of the people I've ever managed have grown on to be successful in their career. Um, whether I coach them up or coach them out, either way, I find the better path for them. Um, I absolutely acknowledge, I'm not ignorant to the fact that I don't want, I don't want to be at the top, you know, that I, I don't want that, I'm not here to make a bunch of money. Um, Rebecca was doing it for a very long time, um, Sherry Childs has been doing it a very long time. Like I said, I don't think it's fair to, to say that I need to be up there, it's not. Um, I would, I think it, there is a lot of stress that sounds like it's coming with this job, so I would like I'd be more comfortable with the 70 to 75, but I, I mean, I, I definitely acknowledge that I don't need to be 80 or 90, 100, I, and I don't like comparing myself to other people either, you know, like the list of employees and everything that they make, I, I think wherever you go, you negotiate your pay, that seems like everybody does that this, so I'm used to that, but now feel free to ask me any questions or whatever.
I know you can handle stress, we're one of the best waitresses that I've ever had.
Back in my younger days.
Yeah. If anybody can do that on a level, then you'll be able to.
Not only that, but I worked for, I, you know, I worked for a very intimidating uh boss for seven years. Um, and if I can handle anything she throws at me, I feel like I can handle just about anything, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming up and I know this is awkward and, and, you know, I know people are watching and, and I, I'm looking forward to working with you, but you know, I have to think about, you know, what we do, uh, you know, 80 is close to what Sherry's making and she's been here 45 years. So I just cannot see um going up to that high, but I would be happy with 72 and I'd make the motion to start you at 72. I don't know if Alex could better or not.
Hey, Alex, are you awake?
Yeah, I, I had to walk away, man, they were going crazy.
I made a motion to, to start her at 72.
Did you hear that?
72?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, we all agree on it, uh, you know, I'm not trying to shortchange or anything like that. I'm excited, you know, to, uh, I think Courtney's awesome, uh, what we're doing is bad and, uh, you know, I'm not trying to shorten anybody, but the 72 is where we can land on, that, that's fair to me.
That's what I made the motion, so.
Do you want to second her motion?
Or do you want to?
Has she made the motion?
I made a motion, yes.
She made a motion.
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, we got a motion, uh, for 72, uh, Alex Baver say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, votes, nay. Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alex, that you can tell us?
Uh, no, uh, like I said, you know, to the individuals there, just, I make sure that they get the list of uh inaccuracies that we found. And, you know, I think we tried to do a pretty good job as a commission in trying to, you know, not really politicize it or go crazy, make the adjustments we needed, our clerk was right and accurate. Uh, but if they want that information, they can have it, I think, uh, if that happens, we, you know, at the same time, we gotta be open to looking for that, so. Uh, but that's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got it, got it.
See ya.
Well, I would just like to make a couple comments and um nothing, and, and I'd like to know, you know, nothing I have wanted to do, or actually everything we have done as far as the commission with benefits, except for this last thing with, um, with Courtney's uh pay has been unanimous. So it's not just Alex and I making decisions, everything has been voted on and it has been unanimous. Um, there are lots of changes we've done and will continue to do if we find them to be efficient and help the county be better and stronger. Um, there were lots and lots of errors that were found and there is lots of ways, things that we have done that were not the most, um, like, we don't even have, we didn't even have a finance policy, we're working on that now. We just got, two people went out to dinner and it was 80-some dollars. That is ridiculous that we are using other people's money and not putting restraints on that. $20 at the most for dinner, I would think, $20, $25 plus the tip, that is ridiculous. If you want to pay more than that, then you pay yourself, this is not our money and we need to be responsible for it and um we are working on, we do take that seriously, the, the, because it was, I mean, so many people were, were making here and there and, and I thought it was horrible that Kathy, you were making $30,000 more than your deputy. $30,000, that, I, I feel that should have never been, especially because she'd had so much, I mean, the comparable between what, what uh Rebecca was making and Teresa was making was, is, is I feel efficient, but just to not have something to follow to where it's good for not only the county, it's also good for the employees and they have stuff to look forward to now because we are on, on track according to our pay study, you may or may not agree with the pay study, but some people got raises, people didn't.
I've been many times with Crystal and the previous uh HR directors trying to get my people extra money and it couldn't be done, so it was what, what it was, so.
But now we have been able to do that and for the first time in the county's history, we got to implement a whole entire study, everybody would pay for these thousands of dollars for these studies and when they would suggest stuff, they wouldn't do them.
I'd like to know the difference from the pay study because when we did one in 2008 and you asked what was so astronomical about what happened, well, that's what happened with the pay study and it wasn't near, near what it, you changed it now and to pay even the salary positions, $2.6 million, not to include the other salaries, I, I'm interested to find it out, what, what pay was what it was now.
Well, you want to know why we were able to do that? Was because of all the inefficiencies in the budgeting, we found a million dollars to give back to the, to the taxpayers. We, we, we didn't tax them a million dollars less than what they would, plus we were able to give the employees those raises, plus we were able to do everything that all the department heads and all of the outside agencies asked for, plus we were able to do.
I'll wait, I'll wait till after the bud, when the budget starts and what happens is, because that, that all has to be paid for, whatever monies is being spent out of, whatever monies that you said was, was sitting out there, then I'll be curious afterwards how, how all this pans out.
You don't even have to wait till afterwards, Tammy can explain it to you now how we're gonna have more wins.
It's just budgets, we haven't gone through a budget.
Okay, um, and I just want to declare, the only reason I voted against is, I was, I was settled on 75. Um, for, for salary, um, 72 is worth that, that's worth that, but that was, that was the only reason I voted that part. The 10,000 part would just split the difference in probably.
Do you guys have the range for all the other elected officials included as well?
As far as in the pay study?
Yes.
Yeah.
Including your guys?
I never saw what they said, we didn't put us in there.
I don't, I don't know that we did.
Yeah, we are, we are overpaid.
Again, you didn't opt for a pay increase.
Especially since you guys changed your schedule hours, I agree.
No, so, oh, so sitting here and doing nothing and consolidating to make everybody's day a little more efficient? I think that's a little smarter to do than sit here and, you know, look at, look at.
I mean, you can say that when you're making 90,000 when you retire, that's fine.
This is not a job, this is a part-time job, this is not a career, this is not somebody who's sitting here and get.
Cut your guys' salaries.
I, hey, I've tried, I, I cut it, you want to give her 80, I'll cut, let's cut our, our salaries. You want to do that, Keith?
No.
Okay.
Bill 75, cut it, cut all the revenues.
Especially since you guys got tons of raises hidden in the, and that's why we changed that. You, you would give the employees raises and you guys would take raises and not, and not tell the,
Crap, it's unbelievable.
Every time, oh, that is not true, you never ever voted for specific county commission salaries, never.
No.
That's why I put the, that's why we made a resolution that you have to now.
But we, we got a raise like everybody else did.
Exactly, and that's what, that should not happen, you should not give yourself raises without telling the community.
Because of the salary.
It was in the budget, it was in the budgets.
I don't care, that doesn't mean you deserve one.
So did you get a raise since you've been here?
I, I didn't take raises this year and I'm not gonna take a raise next year.
No, did you get, have you had a raise?
I had, yeah, because we were, that's, the way they did it was the way, I didn't know that's how they did it. I didn't know when I voted to give uh employees raises that we got raises too.
Okay, if you guys want to have a discussion outside the camp. Um, anyway, welcome aboard.
So 2:00, 2:00, 2:30?
Uh, 2:30.
2:30?
For what, for square eight? Oh, okay, today? Oh, nice, oh, so the governor came back already or just out there?
All right.
All right.
If that's it, we're adjourned.
1:15.
And you want to, it's, it's gonna sun up every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but remember, it's not this.
Oh, I don't know.
Are we adjourned?
Yep.
Yeah.